Alright, so we're just gonna be going over some labs and CML. We're going to be watching, I believe the guy's name is... Neil Anderson. Neil Anderson. Oh, I gotta update the... I'll update his stuff with the... Let's do that right now, actually. Hmm, I think that looks good. Alright, so we're just gonna be continuing on. We're probably gonna be looking at... We're just gonna be labbing, going through some simple labs. Working with through some of the basics like router on a stick, V-LANs. Going through some show commands. And, uh, DHCP, DNS. Maybe some OSR, you know, OSR, OS, OSRP. And, uh, making, maybe making some zones, some backbones and stuff. So. We'll see how far we get. If you guys have any questions or anything like that, or if there's anything specific in the labs that you wanna see, um, just hit me up. All from there.
You would do this is if you want the router itself to be able to resolve FQDNs. So for example, from the router, maybe you want to ping Linux A from there. Then you would need to set it up as a DNS client. Now, you don't need to set the router up as a DNS client for DNS traffic to pass through it. This is only if you need the router itself to be able to resolve FQDNs to host names. So often, we won't do that. Often, when we're working on a router, we're always gonna be working with IP addresses. But if you did want it to be able to resolve host names, the commands to enter are ip domain lookup to allow it to look up a DNS server, ip name server, and then IP address of your DNS server, IP domain name, and then the primary domain name. And if you want it to also look up additional DNS suffixes, IP domain list, and then those additional suffixes. Okay, so that's how you configure it to be a DNS client. If you wanted a router to be your DNS server, then to configure that, you would enter those same commands plus ip dns server is a command that configures it as a DNS server. And then you would need to enter address records for everything that you want it to be able to resolve. The command for that is ip host, and then the hostname, and then IP address of that host. Now, you will not usually want a Cisco router to be a DNS server. Usually, you would use an external Windows or Unix or Linux server to do that, but it is capable of doing it. Okay, those were the commands. Let's configure that in the lab next. I'll have a look at the lab topology first. You can see I've got three routers, R1, R2, and R3. R1 has got IP address 10.10.10.1. R2 is 10.10.10.2. It's also got an interface of 10.10.20.2. And R3 is at 10.10.20.1. I'm gonna configure R3 as the DNS server. And I'm gonna configure entries for all three routers on there, so it will be able to resolve them. And then we'll configure R1 as the DNS client. Okay, so I've got our window open for...
I'm gonna do something similar in our lab here. We're gonna be using this. Using our router right here, R1. You know, we're gonna use that for DHCP on our, uh, three separate V-LANs. We have three separate V-LANs, uh, VLAN 10, I believe, 20, and 30. R1 sitting on the switch's default VLAN 1 here. And we'll go through all the show, show commands and stuff like that. This is, again, we're, we're, we're using, I downloaded the, the updated, I updated, uh, downloaded the updated model of Cisco Model Labs there. Created a new server. It's pretty good. If you have any questions on it, just give me a shout. Other than that, guys, that's pretty much what we're gonna get into. Oh, we're gonna do it. Oops, already started that off. I gotta, well, not gonna be able to turn that off, actually. Because we're gonna wanna do DNS looking up eventually, but, I was forgetting. But this is what happens, so. Get into things here. It all came pretty back to me, you know, once I started running commands again. Um, for things, so. Where are we at? We're good to back out, out here, because we gotta do some show commands. Show IP. So pretty much down. Let's do a show, a face brief. That's probably a better one. So. As you can see, still gotta start remembering the commands, but it's starting to come back in. But as you can see here, we got nothing, um... Bring this cover here. We got nothing on our, um, on any of our interfaces here on our router R1. We got R1 right here. Um, let me actually do this. So guys can see that a little bit better right there. And, you know what, let me... Nah, that's good. If you guys have had a time seeing, um, the command lines and the terminals and stuff like that. What I can, I can always just make it bigger for you guys, so you guys can see it. So just give me a shout out, guys, if you can't see it clearly. Alright, so as you can tell, we have nothing, um, we got nothing on any of our interfaces here. I'll do a show, run config. I can see the rest of our running configuration here on our router. Nope, nothing, nothing, nothing. So it's pretty bare bones right now. There's no real configuration in it over here. And our switch. So again, this is our switch right here. So the only thing I did on the switch so far, um, when I was just kinda setting up the lab, was is, um, I just set up the V-LANs, um, and got the interfaces pretty much set up on the V-LANs. You'll see what I did right there. And all I did really on the, um, on the little Linux host here, was I just switched their, um... I just changed their host names. That was it. Um, so you can see it's host 1, host 2, host 3, so you guys can see kinda what I did. Yeah, that was the only thing I did. Uh, but as you can tell, there's no, um... None of them have IP addresses added to them. Obviously, they have their, uh, MAC addresses and stuff. But all of them, so you can see, before we get our DHCP and DNS and all that set up. So you can see there's nothing on them right now. Boom. Alright, there we go, so. There's our three, our three hosts right there with our MAC addresses with no IP addresses. Yep. And we show that, that back over here. Yeah, so, so, yeah, just like I was saying, so on the interfaces, I've already, so I've left, interface, um, zero on the switch, just on its default, on its, uh, defaults, uh, VLAN 1. But I did create, uh, three of the V-LANs. I got, uh, these three right here. Uh, VLAN 10, 20, 30, and they're on interface 1, 2, 3. And each opposing host is on, um, VLAN 10, 20, and 30 right there, off of their adjacent, interfaces right there. Other than that, um, I haven't done any, and we can look at... What up? Uh, we can do a show VLAN. Brief, show VLAN brief. I was to do, I said, uh, summary, show VLAN some. That'll be a long. Um, what's the show I'm looking for? VLAN, VLANs. It showed more information about the V-LANs. Which show command was it? I think it's switchport. That was. Yeah, this was it was. Show interface. This was the show command I was looking for. So it was show interface, show interface switchport. That's the one I was looking for. It's the information that it has on it. Okay. So some of the information that you can see when you do that show command is, is you get your, um, your interface, so interface 0-0, switchport enabled, administrative static, static access, operational mode, static access, administrative trunk encapsulation, negotiating. So this is negotiated, uh, operation trunk, trunking encapsulation native. Access more VLAN 1 default. Some of that stuff. This is where it gets into, um, so this is the next interface, uh, VLAN 10. Access negotiated. Negotiate. Alright, so I just covered some of the information, um, on our switch, so I know kinda where we're at with things. So again, there's really not much, uh, setup, setup on them right now. But for the most part, when it comes to... You just have to, a couple more things to configure on the switch before, um, the, um... And we're gonna take a look at that too, 'cause these hosts are already... So if we come over here, and if we take a quick packet capture, we'll capture the packets right now. So you can see that the hosts are already trying to send out, um, DHCP messages. And we'll download that real quick. Call over here to Wireshark. So if we come over here to Wireshark, let me take a look at our, um, our actual PDU, well, the PDUs that it was sending through there. So here we go. So we got STP. So STPs, obviously, it's running on the switch here, spanning tree protocol. And if we look at that, um, some of the information, um, inside of the PDU that, um, the switch is sending out, you know, because of spanning tree protocol, um, it's trying to learn the, the route, the route bridge, the route switch, pretty much, for, um, pretty much the segment that it finds itself on. And this is some of the roof identifying, um, information here. So the roof identifier, I can open that up, uh, the priority, and the route bridge system. The hello, the timers, and all that stuff. So all that stuff's in there under expand tree. So that's span tree. This is all coming from the switch, but if we take a look over here, we have DHCP messages, and, uh, these DHCP messages, these are coming from the host. Um, and we can identify that too. So if we come over here. And we'll just take a look, so. The host, so there's the MAC address right there. So if we come over here to, which did I steal this from? I stole this from 3. Let me shut this off, yeah. We come back to host 3 right here, 5254075. And we'll see what that MAC address is. And it's the same MAC address too, that we got right here, so, yeah, load that down, so you can, you can see that. So, um, what do we got? 52540075E879. 525407, 70075E879, so. What we're seeing here is these are, uh, the host requesting, uh, making a request. See, request, um, over the Ethernet. And saying the client IP address is nothing, your IP address, da-da-da. So it's looking for information from a DHCP server. Uh, it's giving its client's, uh, MAC address right there. Server hostname is not given, boost file not given, so magic cookie, it's looking for a cookie. So yeah, it's looking for some, and these are the messages that it wants to get back, like discovery and all that stuff. So it's looking for some of that information right there, right there. But this is when we look inside of the PDUs. This is kinda information that we can collect. That's that, and what do we got here? Yeah, the rest are just the same. And that's all we're gonna be having. That's all we're going to see right now. In the network for information. It's better run out, because we're not, we can't route. We don't have, um, IP addressing. Obviously, the, um, the switch here, the switch does know, uh, so we can do this, show MAC. So if we come over here and do the show MAC address table, the switch has already learned, um, the MAC addresses for everything that's, um, that its interfaces are touching, pretty much. Because it's sending out STP messages and stuff like that, and it's getting information back. STP messages and stuff like that. And it's getting information back when it sends out those messages. Um, if you go over here. Uh, to. Yeah. If you come over here to the router two. So if you come over to the router and you do, you do a show STP. STP. Neighbors. So if you do a show, uh, CDP neighbors, um. It will show you. Let me do a. Let me do a better. There we go. So there's a detail. So there, there's a better way to look at it. So, uh, show CDP neighbors detail. So over here we could see, um. The router routers are using, uh, let me get some more information on. All right. So let's find out. So, uh, CDP is Cisco's discovery protocol. It is a priority level two protocol developed by Cisco system and enables Cisco's. Devices such as router switches to share information about themselves, uh, with, uh, directly connected devices. This information includes device. Uh, identifiers, capabilities, software versions and information. Why does CDP operate, uh, before IP address assignment? Uh, CDP functions as the data link layer, layer two of the OSI, which means it does not need, require an IP address to operate as soon as this is good device interface is up. CDP can send and receive packets to discover neighbor devices. This early operation is beneficial for network topology, discovery and troubleshooting even before full IP configuration. Um, is complete. So, uh, CDP is Cisco discovery program. So because these two. Um, the router on the switch are connected by a link, uh, directly connected by a link. They are, you know, sending each other CDP messages. And, you know, you can already see that the, uh, the router here has already got information about the switch, um. You know, the MAC address and stuff like that, the V LAN, the native V LAN it's on, the duplex, um, the, um. Port it's on, the interface, um, you know, what, what it is, router switch, because this is a li- layer. Three switch here. Come over here and we can do some of the things. So, um, CDP neighbors. Um, deets. And we can see the very same thing. So we got R one. So just like we saw on here, we can see the, the, even we can even see the device ID. So device ID. So what I've changed it to the host name. Um, interfaces, ports, um, capabilities, router, even knows what it's running, um, has the version, whatnot. Uh, and the also the MAC address, the peer, peer source MAC address and stuff. So. All right. So I'm going to start pretty much designing this. And again, this is, um. What we'll be doing here. Let me turn this off right here. So this is the. Router on a stick. So this topology that we're going to be doing, going over example is, is the router on a stick. All right. Um, now. What that kind of, that means this. This router right here, um. Is pretty much the, this would be. Probably like, um, how would I say it? Is it? I guess it's, yeah, it's edge point. So this would be the edge point, the edge point router. Between you and the greater internet here and, um. You know, you have your campus or your office here and. You have, you know, your host. So you would want to be able to have more than one connection. Into the router. So you split things up using a switch. We're not going to be doing any, um, any layer. Um, routing off of the switch. Um, we don't want to start doing that. We want to keep this as layer two, so we can get the benefit of using the router. But the router is going to be, uh, because it's a layer two switch with the intelligence. Um, we can manage our interfaces and break them into virtual, their own virtual subnets here. And that's what we've done here with breaking each one off in its own V LAN. Right here, because I can come here and I'm going to show you that before. Before we, um. Before I get going to do stuff with DHCP here, I'll show how we can create connections, um. Without DHCP and then what DHCP would do for us dynamically, um. Once we are broken off and stuff like that. So we'll go back and forth and we'll lab around. Again, if you guys have any questions on anything, just make sure you guys get my attention. And I'll do my best to explain to you guys. So. All right. So say the, um. So as it stands right now, we're pretty much on all our separate V LANs. And if I come over here and I go to host one, which is host one right here, I come over here. And I go, uh, config. Zero. Six, eight. Zero. Dot one. Mask. Two, five. Two, five, two, five, zero. Put a, uh, suit on front of that. So now if I go back to IF config, I have. Config. You'll see my new, my IP address now is, uh, one, nine, two, one, six, eight, dot, zero, dot, one. And, uh, broadcast my mask, two, five, two, five, two, five. So, um. Right now I am pretty much the only person sitting on any one of the segments with an IP address. Um, still campaign anybody. Obviously nobody else has an IP address besides me. So we come over here. And we're going to stay within that same IP address range. So we're going to come over here to this one that says pseudo. Config. One, six, eight, dot, zero, dot, two, with a net mask. Two, five. Zero, dot. I forgot to add the. Right here. THO. Sorry about that. All right. Now, if I, again, if I run another, um, IF config. You'll see that my IP address is one, nine, two, one, uh, one, six, eight, dot, zero, dot, two. Hello, bro. What up? Toto. And my net mask is two, five, two, five, two, five, dot, zero. So it's in the same, um. Same exact, um, IP address range as these, um. And I'll show you currently right now. So if I try to ping host one, which is one, nine, two, one, six, eight, dot, zero, dot. Dot, one. I will not be able to, um. I will not be able to ping host one right now. So you see, um, eight packets transmitted, zero packets received. Same thing if I go over here to host one and I try to ping one, nine, two, one, six, eight, dot, zero, dot, two. Um, same exact thing. Three packets transmitted, zero packets received. I won't be able to, um, communicate with host two right here. Uh, this can simply be remedied, um, though, if I was to come over here to the switch. Config. And I was to go into, uh, the interface. We'll say we're going to host two's interface versus interface. Interface zero dash two. And we would say switch port, um, V LAN, switch port access. V LAN. Ten, because as we remember. Yeah, as we remember, um, host, host one is in V LAN ten, host two is in V LAN twenty. So if we change. Host, um, the interfaces V LAN to V LAN ten now. Okay. If we come back here, that will do a, let's exit real quick. Let's do a show. V LAN brief now. We'll see that. Move this out of the way. The, the two interfaces, uh, interface zero dash one and zero dash two are now both on. The V LAN ten, the sales V LAN here. We go back here to host one. And we run the same ping, ping one, nine, two, one, six, eight, dot, zero, dot, two, but he can figure. So I'm just going through. I'm going to be going through, um. Basic to try to get up to possibly OSPF. Uh, maybe touch on, you know, ER, EIGRP possibly, um. Configurations. So we're going to work through that, some DNS, DHCP, um, going back and forth, um, doing some start with, um, switches. Finding route, you know. Going through all that, S N two P, just labbing, doing some simple labs today. Not simple, but I guess we'll work from simple and work our way up. Um. I got some sources I want to listen to. Um. That's pretty much it. I need to, to start, I just need to get back into the habit of lab and stuff. And going through the concepts and the ideas of what these are again. So that's it. All right. So we're going to ping, uh, we're going to ping host two from host one again. And as you can see here, now we have, we're getting back successful, um, um. But we're successfully, um, our requests are being sent back. So we're getting here. Um, we could take a look at. We'll do this. From this one, I'm going to capture these packets here, packet capture. And I'll go back to it. So we're going to go back to host one. Most ping. Start collecting some of that data and we'll stop. Download that real quick. Come over here to wire shock, not up. So I was three cent, right now. My head is the most recent right here. All right. So over here on wire shark, uh, we can take a look at. Some of the PDUs that we're seeing out. So. From source. So let's take a look at this one first. So we'll take a look from our source, one, nine, two, one, six, eight, dot, zero, dot, one. This is, uh, host one to destination. One, nine, two, one, six, eight, dot, zero, dot, two. So that's our host two. We got our ping request. And so we come over here. Take a look. So that's the ethernet. Take a look at this right here. All right. So we got our type echo request, do, 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 do. Frame some of that data. So let's just take a look at some of the information again. We, we didn't have no DHCP, none of like that set up before. This is just simply, um. Setting up static. This is static addressing. And there's no router involved. There's no, nothing like that. What's happening is, is pretty much as these, uh. And it'll, it says it, it'll, it goes through if we go through, um. We go through this whole packet right here. We could see what's really going on. Because you, you, you could see as it passes through, uh, the switch. And obviously the switch knows because it's already been populated on its MAC address table, which interfaces. Uh, where these MAC addresses are living off of this interfaces and it knows directly where to sh- send it out of that interface. Obviously with the IP addressing. Um, that helps us find, uh, locate with that, with that MAC addresses, you know. Um, yeah. So let me, uh, close it right there. So again, so we, we, what we did was is we statically addressed, a- addressed these two. Host right here, put them on the same V LAN and they can, clearly they can communicate with each other, but we don't want that. Uh, we want three separate V LANs like we had before where there's, there's going to be a host on each different V LAN. And each different V LAN is going to have living on its own subnet. All right. And. How are we? Goodbye, guys. Oh, appreciate the subscribe, man. You have a good day, big guy. Keep it easy. And, um. So we need, we need a router to be able to route traffic between, um. These, these V LANs and it's going to be doing that through, uh, um, trunking, encapsulation and, um. So we're, we're going to get into that. So let's remove, um. Let's remove. Host two from V LAN ten and put it back into, um. V LAN twenty where it belongs, because right now there's nothing inside of V LAN twenty. So. Interface echo zero dash. Two. Yes. Switch port. Access V LAN twenty. All right. Exit out of there. We'll do a show V LAN. So now, again, we, now we have, um, host two back in V LAN twenty and there's only, um. One host back in V LAN ten, host one. Now, again, if we go back and then try to ping. We will now not be able to ping, um. Host two, not because they're not within our. You know, quote unquote, IP address range, um. Simply because now they're completely on their own virtual. Simply because now they're completely on their own virtual um. Network, their own virtual land. They're completely uh separated from us virtually. Um again, even if IP addresses were within the same address range, um. Those packets wouldn't be routed there because we're not being routed. So. That's the concept of the router on the stick topology is. The because it looks obviously. So you have the router on a stick and it's supplying um. Route routing DHCP, you know, and some other services on. In this instance, I'm also gonna be. Um handling the DNS requests, creating DNS um. DNS records to handle DNS requests. So for these hosts and stuff like that. So we're gonna go through that. Again, minimize that for now. Work over these two. So let's go over to the router. Alright, so. We'll keep things simple with a um. A one nine two, one six eight dot. Should do a one to keep it? Yeah, we'll do a one dot zero slash twenty four. So pretty much this will be our gateway. Right here, pretty much like our. Our. This is what I'm gonna be break the the network that will be held within the router. And I'm gonna break things off off of their opposing group VLANs. But simply, you know, one nine two. Uh one six eight dot ten dot zero slash twenty four, you know. Two six eight dot. Twenty dot zero slash twenty four. Two six eight. Thirty zero slash twenty four. So something like this for our um. Well, the other way around, I guess. Um for our respected. VLANs and whatnot joint. Very former OG, you the man. Appreciate you. Um. Yeah. So as you, so this would be the simple, simple breakdown of our. Oh, let me get the. Because I have a hard time. See that. Alright, so you guys can see that. I just don't want the chat and all that uh get in the way of everything. Even though I appreciate everybody in chat. Appreciate everybody. So you guys can kind of understand um. Where everything's gonna go. So if we come over here, we go to our interface. That's zero dash zero. And we're gonna start, start giving out, you know, create an IP address for this. So we'll do IP address. Nine two, one six eight. Yeah, because this is. Gonna be our native. Native one. Yeah. Alright, one six eight dot one dot one. Two five. Not two five, not two five, not zero. Uh we'll do a no shut on this. And okay, so. Yeah, I think that's all we're really gonna do for that one for right now. Alright, so now this is where we start creating um. Some of the. The um what would be the name of? There the the sub, the sub interfaces. Uh the sub interfaces for each. VLAN, virtual land that we're going to create. So for each. Come over here. So for each VLAN. That we need to route between here on the switch. We're gonna create a virtual interface. To each VLAN from this one interface right here. So when I say sub interface, it's pretty much like a virtual interface. That is on this. Single interface right here that's still going there. And um yeah, so that's what we're gonna do. Alright, so. We're going to interface um interface Ethernet zero dash. Zero. That's zero point, we're gonna say ten, okay? We're gonna say cap encapsulation dot Q ten for VLAN ten, okay? Dot one Q for VLAN ten right there. Alright, and then we're gonna give it an IP address. Uh IP address, one nine two, one six eight dot ten dot one. Alright, to keep within that address range, okay? Because what's gonna happen is is ten's going to be. One nine two, one six eight dot uh dot ten is gonna be our network. And then obviously, this is gonna be our host. So one nine two, one six eight dot ten is our network. We're on VLAN ten, okay? We have a net mask of two five, two five, two five. Not zero. I'm doing no shut on this. Alright, going to the next, we'll create another one um interface zero dash zero. And again, this is for twenty now. So this is for VLAN twenty. Okay, so we're gonna say in in cap uh dot. Dot one Q twenty for VLAN twenty IP address. Again, put in that same um IP addressing um range. So we're gonna say one nine two. Uh one six eight dot twenty dot one, two five, two five, two five, not zero. Give you a no shut. Alright, go on to the next virtual interface, the last virtual interface we're gonna create here. So we're gonna say uh Ethernet zero dash zero point thirty. For VLAN thirty, in cap dot one Q thirty for VLAN thirty. IP address, one nine two. Six eight dot thirty one. Two five, dot two five, two five, zero. Give me a no shut. Alright. Alright, so exit out of there real quick. Uh let me give this a quick write and let's do a show run real quick. Kind of take a look at what's going on here. Alright, so if we gotta do a show run. Um what we've done is is now on our uh interfaces here, specifically interface zero dash zero. Which is the only interface um mind you that we have going to our switch here, okay? Um we now have um created virtual interfaces here, alright? That are represented in the network ranges that we're going to create um for our host. Um now, we still haven't created DHCP or anything like that yet. So mind you, um nothing can really still, nothing's really going on right now. Um actually, let me do this too. For then, so things potentially don't get all messed up. I'm gonna bring these two hosts. Let's do this. Actually, it doesn't matter. I can do that one and when they're ready and the DHCP will override everything on that anyway. So it don't really matter. Alright, so we've seen that. And. Alright, now we want to. Do this. Alright, going back in configuration terminal mode here. And now this is where we're gonna create our IP server uh that's going to um. Give out these addresses um. To the host on the respective VLANs. Um and we're gonna check all that too. That's gonna be part of us completing the lab correctly. Is this, is it, it's, is the DNS servers going to give out the respective proper IP addresses? And the respective VLANs? Let's get into that. Alright, so how we do that is is we go to configuration, terminal mode is IP P D H C P. Yeah, we can do our excluding entity. Alright, so we'll do that for us. So exclude, we'll make our exclusion list for us. So um. DHCP, when it comes to DHCP servers, you can exclude particular I address ranges, addresses, single addresses, address ranges. Um from what your DHCP server is going to give out. Now, this is a good practice. Um. To, you know, protect some address ranges that, you know, possibly you want just for networking stuff or what have whatnot. So. We're gonna just create some some list on just to have them. If you don't need it, we're just gonna have to do it. Um but just for good practice here. So let's get into that. So exclude addresses and we're gonna do one for each address range. One nine two, one six eight dot ten dot um one, two. One nine uh one uh two, one six eight dot ten dot ten. Alright, well, that's just gonna do is is from one nine two, one six eight dot ten dot one, from one nine two dot uh one six eight from ten dot ten. The DHCP server in that respective um VLAN will not add, give out these particular address range. Uh just so I can potentially use it for other networking devices or whatever have you. So um. Go to that and do that. And we're gonna do that for each perspective one. So for network twenty. Uh for network thirty. Alright, and we're gonna create our pools now DHCP. And we're gonna save VLAN ten. Alright, I'm gonna say network. One nine two, one six eight dot ten dot zero, two five, dot two five, dot two five, dot zero. Now, remind you, this is the whole address range. So from one nine two, one six eight dot ten, that's the network and then host, okay? And they can have another two hundred, you know, some odd host, a minus to ten. So maybe, you know, hundred some odd addresses. On each VLAN here. Alright. So that creates that and we're gonna identify the default router. Default router um is one nine two, one six eight. Dot ten dot one. No, remember we. The virtual um. The virtual interface, the virtual interface that's on the Ethernet interface now has that. Address on there, okay? So that's our default um router. Let's put a space there or it's gonna freak out. And we're also gonna do um DNS two as well. Because we're gonna set up DNS two. And I'm gonna say one nine two, one six eight. That ten dot one for DNS as well. That all looks good. Alright, so we're gonna do that again. DHCP. Pool. Let's kind of get into that. Um network. Again, we're just gonna switch it to the ten, the twenty network, I mean. Default router, one nine two, one six eight dot twenty dot one. DNS, one nine two, one six eight, that's why I don't want. Thirty. Network. Default router, one nine two, one six eight. Uh thirty dot one. DNS, one nine two, one six eight. The thirty. At one. Alright. Picks it out of there. Let's give that a quick write. And we'll just give everything a quick check. Um I kind of just kind of went through that. So let's do a show. Let's do a show IP and brief real quick. Alright, see what we got going on. So we got our. Addressing, yep, 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 yep. Okay, do let's do a show DHCP. Um may have known that yet. Let's do a do show run. Might give us some the other information. So we got all that. Yep, yep, yep. All seems good. Addressing seems good. And here is our DHCP um configuration stuff. So that all looks good. Um we got our ten, twenty, thirty, ten, twenty, thirty network with our address ranges. VLAN ten, correct, correct, correct. And then twenty, correct, 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 thirty, correct, 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 correct. Alright, so that is all working. It's all right there. Alright, so that is all working, that's all right there. There's my hours over here. Watching his video, he's gonna get into DNS and all that soon too and all that. So. As it stands right now, I believe these are still not getting any IP addresses at the moment right now, cuz there's still. Couple other configurations we need to do before this will actually all work. So we got that, um, I do, let me see if I can, I do wanna get DNS set up. What I think I'm going to do. Cuz I want them all to point at the same one. And that will be. That will be that interface, so I'll have him do that then to have all the DNS requests go there then, so. Let's do this, let's fix this then, so we'll go back in the configuration, uh, config T. DHCP pool. V LAN ten. And we're just gonna change the DNS DNS to one I two, one six eight dot one dot one. Alright, so that changed, um, so yeah, so I'm just gonna point the DNS at the um, at that one interface. Because that's where I'm gonna have the DNS server, not on each and every one of those, so I think that's correct, yeah. Glad I caught that before. Alright, so. Go back to configuration terminal, global configuration terminal mode, uh, we're gonna say name, name.